Chairman has to preside. God bless the United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. This time Chaplain Adams will lead us in prayer afterwards. Please remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Let us pray. Blessed gracious Lord, heavenly Father, God, what a privilege it is to be together tonight to do business, Lord, for the betterment of our county. Lord, I thank you for these men and women who separated themselves to serve you and to serve our county. God bless them, I pray, you've been whispering in everything that they do. Be with us now and bless us, we ask, in the name of Jesus.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence your cell phones. If you did so, go ahead and sign in electronically. So we've got one absent. So we do have to waive the 12-day rule tonight, so I'll take a motion to waive the 12-day rule. We will get to it in our regular meeting format. It's item number 12. It's 082512. So a motion by Hooks, second by Wilson. Second by Wilson. And we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Lockside. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the July 14th meeting? Motion by Wilson, second by Dunn. Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Mr. Dunn.
Nothing.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing done, seeing done, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carried. All right, motion to accept committee reports and correspondence. Motion by Berry, second by Dunn. Commissioner Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On report number three, as of reading this in the planning commission, Mr. Lefty, Ken, was talking about, I guess, one of the planning commission members, I guess, was acting as a citizen of Republic Commune and was wanting to change zoning. But that still has to go through the same process as the planning commission, that's right?
Yes, only you can change zoning.
I just noticed that it looked like maybe they had just fallen under the public commune, removed themselves from the planning commission. As long as it has to go the same route, we will care about that. Yeah. On number five on the property committee, under the Sheriff's Department Storage Facility, Madam Purchasing Agent, are we on tune to? What's the status of the building?
We haven't looked forward on the building at all yet until, I guess, I'm waiting on sparks really to give me some specifications on it.
Okay. I thought they had, I thought they had, but we're gonna run out of time if I'm careful. That's what bothers me is we gotta give a 30-day notice. I think that lease is up in May. I thought the sheriff had a schematic there.
We have a schematic of the building, the proposed building, and then we're just trying to make sure we put it in the best site down there.
Do you have any idea how long it's gonna take, in my case?
Probably for the next couple of weeks, we would have, but that's an area, but as far as getting everything, I don't know what the lead time is for materials and everything.
Because that's like a kid, isn't it?
It is, it is, and just lining up with different people and all that stuff.
I'm just afraid, I think that's May, a renewal. We gotta give a 30-day notice, so that's April, and we just don't even have the time. That will do another year's lease, I think. I don't think we're gonna do that, so. So if we could, if we could just stay on top of that, that would be greatly appreciated.
I'm looking at hours since we get the specifics.
That would be greatly appreciated. The other one was number 11. Yes, Mayor, infrastructure development district, can you shed just a little light on that?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you bringing this up. So this fact sheet basically is in your office packet as introduction to this new capability that local governments have. The General Assembly passed an act, a fast build this past session, which gives all municipalities, including counties and cities, the authorization to create infrastructure development districts. And without going through it point by point, the whole point really is to be able to pass on the cost of adding infrastructure to the people who are going to be benefiting the most from that expansion. So it removes the responsibility of local governments, of utilities, and even the developer to have to pay for infrastructure, and puts it on the people that will be benefiting the most. So I'm introducing this to you now because I anticipate in the coming months, three to six months, that we will have our first petition for an infrastructure development district. So I'll continue to bring you information. I don't want this to just pile on you at the same time, and we have to figure it out. So we'll begin the education now and keep that going over the next few months before the petition comes.
So this is something that the cities and the counties can work together on?
Yeah, necessary, absolutely. If there's something that falls in the side of the city, or if a city utility, for example, needs to serve an area in the county, obviously, everybody would be involved.
And, Mr. Chairman, the other correspondence we received tonight on the networking event that City of Harren's putting on, I really appreciate them taking the lead on this, and Mayor West, Mayor Best, and thanks for what you've done with that. And I would already saw September the 15th on our calendar to try to attend that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunn, you have to say it.
Nothing.
All right, any other discussion or any other debate? Hearing done, seeing done, Madam Clerk. Good. All right, next up is a list of notaries. Please take a minute to look at those. Take a motion in a second form. You scroll down here if there's anything else. There it is. Thank you, Mayor. All right, motion by Henderson, second by Cunningham. Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate your willingness to serve.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Agreed.
All right. Any discussion, any debate? Hearing done, seeing done, Madam Clerk.
I'm having computer issues.
We can go voice vote if you want.
Okay.
All right, motion carries, 15. All right, next is a hearing of delegation. Do remind you that to speak to the county commission, it must be germane to the county commission and its jurisdiction. So at that time, if anyone wants to address the county commission, please come forward.
Good evening, good to see everybody. I'm Justin Snow, the president and CEO of the Run Allez. Joining me tonight, I have Jennifer Brown, she's our director of education and workforce development. So we want to share just a couple items tonight. In your packet, you should have a copy of the Run Allez President's Report. I encourage you to take time to go through that because it shows a quick snapshot of everything that's going on in the building, from the Chamber of Commerce, the Department of Health and Public Health, all the great work that the state is doing with tourism. One event that you'll see that's notated in the President's Report is last Tuesday, we had the County National Night Out. It's the third time that we've put it on, but it's a county-wide event, the best one we've ever had attended twice. So it's a great opportunity for the community to interact with law enforcement, first responders. It was a great event. It was good to see a lot of you out there attending that event. So, and I'm gonna let Jennifer share, we did something pretty unique this year with our school teachers on their first day back to school on their end service day, and I'm gonna let Jennifer share what we did with the teachers on July 28th.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Brown, I'm the Director of Education and Workforce Development for Run Allez. And on July 28th, we took about 474, 480 educators, guidance counselors, and their admin teams to explore some of the nuclear workforce opportunities available to their students. We took the entire day, they kind of, they did a little bit of a round robin kind of situation and visited seven different sites. You'll see on the handout that I gave you on the front where it says Run County Schools Nuclear Professional Development Day, there's a few pictures there. But then, I think one of the most exciting things is on the back, Run County's making headlines. So those are national, those are also international, as Mayor Preswell sent me this afternoon. And you can scan those QR codes, read the full articles, that the teachers and guidance counselors, principals, they all were given some information about student opportunity programs, some internship programs, and then some field trip opportunities for their students, and also how to get those industry representatives into the classroom to further educate our kids and better guide them for their post-secondary options. Does anybody have any questions for me or Justin?
Y'all have a good picture played this morning.
Isn't it wonderful? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate what y'all do. All right, next.
Anybody else want to go, man? Okay, so I've got three minutes.
Well, let me explain rules first.
Okay.
It needs to relate to the county legislative body.
Yes, okay.
And now, so don't get this confused, although we're in a courtroom, we're not a body of law, we're the collective legislative body for running and governing Run County.
That's right, and Run County's being sued, they are defended in the county. Now, let me put this on the road.
Let me say that too, you've dropped five lawsuits, I believe. So it's a legal matter now that will be resolved in a court.
And this lawyer here is a defendant, Mr. Berry.
And I'm a defendant as well. Mr. Berry, I'm a defendant as well.
You've been named as defendant. It's case number 2025114. I'm just gonna enter on record and I'll leave. I don't want to cause no trouble. Are you gonna block me from entering on the record? Well, thank you, man.
Pass it on, and then...
Where you at? Give that a minute right there. There's 37 pages with four exhibits on that entered into the minutes. This lawyer has to recuse himself, he can't sit and not give him.
All right, we're past what we can do as a legislative body.
No, you ain't. You got to recuse, and he's got to recuse. Now, that's conspiracy. I ain't trying to, tell you, you tell me leave, I leave. But now, it's a federal crime to block me. I've handed every one of you just 18, four, ever since I walked in here, this federal criminal statute. And it's so plain and simple, it's black letter law.
I can't argue with you no more because it's a...
You've argued too long, you've been in conflict since March the 17th. Four, I'll leave, I'll leave. You head to federal prison with this lawyer right here. And that's where they keep criminals.
Right, yes, I believe.
I'll leave. Okay. I got it, I got my budget. Let's go. Now, I've got a lot to say. I'm patient, I'm gonna leave real quiet. Raise my truck and go home.
All right, thank you, Ron. Thank you. All right, anyone else want to address the Run County Commission? All right.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Attorney? You started mentioning names now, I mean, we've got good insurance, right? As a county official.
You've got good insurance, I'm not sure what is applying.
Okay, but I mean, when he starts calling it individual, that's concerning.
I got mine, it went three months ago.
Okay.
Thanks. All right, this time, it's time for the county attorney to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have in your packet the results of last month's property maintenance court cases. Every one either got resolved except one, there is one property that we would have to clean up. Additionally, in your packet are the final documents on the Humper Truck case. It has finally been closed out, and you have the settlement. That, Mr. Chairman, is my report. Does anybody have any questions?
So, Mr. Brackett.
Where are we at on the dangerous trade lawsuit? Have we spent any money, are we in court with it, or where are we?
Not yet, it has been served, but it's not gone to court yet.
All right, any other questions, Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Any other questions for the county attorney? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the county executive's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank Justin and Jennifer for stealing most of my thunder in my report. But first thing I was gonna say was just thank Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Dunn, Ms. Cindy Lockett, Jennifer Brown, and Justin for all that they did to put together this incredible day of taking the majority of our teachers across the district to see the nuclear sites, help them get an awareness and understanding of what's happening, so that they can have an influence on our kids and helping our kids get what I believe are the best jobs in the country. I don't think it's something, anything like this has ever been done before, to my knowledge, and it's getting, like Jennifer said, international attention. American Nuclear Society is the authority in the nuclear world on all things nuclear. So I just want to thank them and make sure you all understood what a huge deal this was. Also, I'm not gonna read all the points to you, but looking at the rundown here, that was my first point. On the third point, TCSA Annual Fall Conference is October 8th through 10th, so be sure to let our office know if you'd like to go. It is in Knoxville, so I know a couple of you mentioned hotel rooms, so make sure if that's something you want to do, just let us know in as much advance as possible, and we'll always work with you like we have. And then also, Chairman, the October meeting for the commission is on October 13th, which is on a federal holiday and spring break, or fall break. Fall break, so.
It's one spring break, but...
Yeah, yeah, but just make...
Make a motion before that previous meeting's moved, if the commission subsides.
We'll make a note of that for the September meeting to make sure we do that. And then, it just heads up to, in the September meeting, you all will be approving the resignation of a school board member and potentially also approving the nomination of a school board member on that same meeting. So we've started that process with Mr. Lefty, make sure by statute, we're following what the process says we need to do, I just wanted to give you all notice that that was coming. And then finally, wanted to acknowledge friends from HUB that we have here. Last year, the commission appropriated over $400,000 to help HUB install fiber throughout their service area, and Heath Lewis from HUB, I believe, will come up to us and give us a quick update on that.
Sir, thanks for having me. First, I want to say, on behalf of the county utility board, thank you guys for the money that you've done that are allocated towards our project. As you remember, back in December 2024, you awarded HUB a $434,000 grant supporting our fiber project, helping to bring world-class internet to homes and businesses across our community. At this point, we're about 40, we've installed about 40 miles of fiber in Run County. We started in our downtown area, we've installed fiber on Rix Chapel Road, up Oakdale Highway, we've completed the loop around Swan Pond Circle, we're currently on Webster Park, and we're working way towards the Dulles area. I think we're gonna have, we're projected to have customers come online in the next two to three months likely. We're working on our Hudson in our downtown area, we're getting our electronics installed, the project's progressing forward just as we had planned. Total, I think our project's about $26 million, and we're projected to be completed in the next 18 months. So again, I just want to say thank you guys for supporting us, helping us support Run County.
Sir, how many people will you service once you're done?
I think we're gonna pass about 7,400 homes.
And your speed is one gig, or?
So we're offering four residential packages. We have a 300 megabyte package, a one gig package, a two gig package, and a four gig package. We're also going to have commercial packages as well. I think those are gonna start, a one gig package is gonna be about $100, a two gig package is, I think, $199, and then we'll have, I guess, special case packages where we'll come in and do a consultation with you.
Hi, Brackett, that's part of being Commissioner in District Two, if things happen.
You'll get things done.
Thank you, sir.
Again, thank you, guys.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. I'd answer your questions.
All right, any questions for the county mayor?
I have some, but it don't pertain to what he's doing, you want me to do it now or during new business?
Would you have, pertain to new business?
It could be, I just have some questions about some stuff, so.
He's best about shooting now.
Can y'all look into, like, own properties, back tax property, when you put it up for auction, is there a way y'all can look at where maybe that year timeframe is taken up for, goes out of the books? That way, when the people buy it, they can actually do something with it and not have to worry about somebody coming back. Can we do that? Is that something?
That one-year redemption period is by state law. There is a procedure in the state law where the buyer can ask that the redemption period be reduced if the property is vacant, but the buyer has to file a motion in Chancery Court to request that, but otherwise, it is a year, and there's no way to like that.
I appreciate that, that's, I just wanted to throw that out there, maybe I did something today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Berry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On that same, on that same thing, if that buyer, if we took, if we could take it off the back tax and work with developers to build homes on it, or to build whatever, whatever that lot, if it's, if it's suitable for a single family, or a double, or apartment, and get something going with housing on that, instead of just, instead of just selling it for back tax, would that suffice for them to request? That be eliminated, that portion?
Well, once it goes for sale for back taxes, then the redemption period is governed by state law. And before it goes to sale, the only way that it can be removed is if the property has environmental problems, we've done that before. If it's something like a right of way that has really no value, it's community law and a subdivision, they can remove it. But you're limited as to what you can do on both ends by state law.
Can we get a private act to change that? If we wanted to, sort of like Murfreesboro, or Redford County did with some stuff on December, though?
I don't know what they've done, so I wouldn't have to look at it.
Is that possible, though, to do a private act to remove that statute?
To remove the redemption period, probably not, because you can't, you can't, you're limited in your ability to modify the general state law that applies uniformly by a private act.
And the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is, again, I commend, I commend the schools on this teacher trip to Oak Ridge. Whether we're ready or not, guys, we're gonna be the nuclear capital of this country several years down the road, and we're getting, we're getting there already. Someone asked me at a meeting, if we weren't fearful of all of this, we traded fear for jobs a long time ago, maybe when Watts Bar came in. But, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see us do the same thing for, like, Run and Anderson Commissions. There's no reason why we shouldn't have a day, a lot of folks serving on the commission probably have no idea what's going on up there, because we've never had an opportunity to get, to get in there. I would move that we, we let the county mayor try to set us up a meeting, the Anderson County Commission, and do a, and do a trip similar to what they did with the teachers.
We did.
We've done that.
We've done it.
We just didn't tell you about it.
That's all you have to keep listening to all these questions. We did a trip with UCor, year, last fall? I think it was on one facility was visited. We went through EMDF, and y'all went through EMDF, and Y12, I believe. Right. I believe it was, yeah.
Yeah, we just did that, yeah, did that one night. I've been there, so.
Yeah, and I can word every day, too, so.
But it sounds like I probably just need to pull that idea in, even though...
Yeah, but no, I mean...
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask if we can get the mayor to do that. I think it's too great of an opportunity for the two commissions, again, not to get together and see things that normally we don't want to see.
Just add to that, a couple of things. One, we did do a joint meeting with school boards and commissions last November, I believe, so it's been coming up on a year since we did anything. I know Mayor Frank, Mayor Frank is interested in continuing that partnership. And then another thing, things have changed so fast, interchanging almost daily, on the reservation with projects, with expansions, with news coming out of the administration. I do believe it would be a good idea to give you all a good update, whatever format that looks like. So, Mr. Chairman, I mean, it's up to you what you wanted to do, but I'd be glad to talk to Mayor Frank, see if there's something we can do to bring us together.
All right, yeah, I'm fine with it, the commission bodies fine with it, I won't make that decision, but I know we did that before, had low turnout, we didn't have the full 15, so, but I'm fine with it. Chair recognizes Commissioner Dunn.
On that same note, I've lived in Oak Ridge for 24 years, and I learned a lot last Monday as far as what's going on, more than I really perhaps. But the thing that was great about it was having the different people, having several people from each of, each of the groups come in and speak to it. I think that if we had that, we don't necessarily have to go from place to place, but have a workshop either here, or if we're doing it jointly with Anderson County, having folks come in and tell and do their presentations, because those presentations do show a lot, but I think that would be beneficial to everyone, because you're gonna learn something that you, you thought you knew, but you're gonna learn some new information.
And that bold statement that you're on.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
As much as I'd like to go, I won't be able to enter any nuclear site because of my past issues with my transplant. And Mr. Jenkins, the school board decided to do an online, to do their video of their meetings.
No, sir, we are moving toward that direction. We have the IPAS we used at our last meeting, but we have not done any.
But they agreed to do that?
No, sir. They had a vote, to my knowledge.
Okay, because I talked to you, and you said to talk to them, that's what I did, and they just want to talk about it after retreats, I just didn't know.
Nobody, nobody made a motion, that the letter that you had sent was in the four packets, and nobody made a motion.
I'll state it right now, I hope we're not supporting nothing from the school board to kill it. They tried to be open with the public, because that's all they need to do. Our meetings are open to the public, and theirs need to be too, especially coming on with the building plan, and they can sit over and try to wait until three people come in that might hear the meeting. You know, y'all need to broadcast it, and I'm just telling you right now, it would be in their best end... And I'm just telling you right now, it, it would be in their best interest to broadcast it. I mean, it's, it ain't right for y'all to sit behind closed doors. I know it's an open meeting, but if that ain't right, they need to do something. Now, I'm speaking, I put it on record right now. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, if any other questions for the county attorneys, that's what we're having on, county, or county executives reporting. We'll move to special orders, so please post those. Special order number one, acceptance of resignation of Baron Pat from the Herrmann representative of E-911 Board. Motion by Wilson, second by Doug. Commissioner Wilson?
I've served with Chief Dapp, done a good job, but he's resigning at this time for future endeavors, so we accept his resignation.
All right, Commissioner Doug?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Special order number two, confirmation of appointment of Wayne Best to the Rome County E-911 Board as the Herrmann representative. This term will expire August 31st, 2029. Letter from City of Herrmann attached. Motion by Wilson, second by Gann. Commissioner Wilson?
I've known Mayor Best quite a while. He'll do a great job. Look forward to serving there.
Mr. Gann?
Glad to have you, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Kurt, don't you have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Best is in audience tonight and I'd like to yield a call to him if he'd like to come up and make any kind of call, man.
All right, Mr. Best? Mr. Kirby's yielded the floor to you if you want to make a call.
I'd just be honored to sit on the non-moral board to represent the City of Herrmann.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our motion carries confirmation of appointment of Ariel Smith to the Rome County Library Board as the Rockwood representative. This term will expire June 30th, 2028. Letter from the Rome County Library Board attached. Motion by Henderson, second by Berry. Commissioner Henderson?
I couldn't think of a better person to sit on.
Commissioner Berry?
Yeah, I think, I think we, we, she's worked with us for a number of years, certainly had, had her more than her amount of tragedy. I think this would be one of the ways that, that we could, that we could help her possibly get through this. Anybody that have a right of letter like this certainly deserves to be on the library, on the library. Thank you very much.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries 15. All right, no old business, we're going on to the no zoning, we're going on to the new business, Resolution 082501, resolution to authorize the county executive to sign an operating agreement between Rome County and Smoky Mountain Offender Tracking LLC for GPS laws. Motion by Parks, second by Gann. Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries 15. Resolution to declare, it's 082502, resolution to declare certain vehicles and equipment as surplus property. Motion by Henderson, second by Hook. Commissioner Henderson?
They're not named, just get rid of them.
Commissioner Hook?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none. All right, motion carries 15. Resolution 082503, resolution reconciling all the resolutions pertaining to the Rome County Fire Department. Motion by Commissioner Parks, second by Gann. Commissioner Parks?
There's a process to get here, but I think it's for the best.
Mr. Gann?
Mr. Parks, I believe it'd be the best for Rome County and the volunteer fire department.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Kirby?
I'd like to ask our county mayor or our county attorney to explain, the board knows the reason we've done this, but I'd like for them to, to get a brief, what they just have to do this. If you want, here, Mr. Mayor.
The way the county fire department was initially set up, the county fire department consisted of the OES officers and all the volunteer fire departments. But the way it was set up, no one really had any control over the volunteer fire departments at the county level. So you had these volunteer fire departments who were really agents of the county with no way to impose any oversight to, which imposes liability on the county if they do something wrong. So what this seeks to do is put the volunteer fire departments on a contractual basis with the county, where the county is contracting with them to provide fire services in their area, paying them to do that. But they are independent contractors and not agents of the county and under the county umbrella. So it lets them maintain their organizations the way they see fit without any interference from the county. And it puts up basically an invisible wall that should isolate the county from liability that would otherwise result if they do something wrong. This was done at the suggestion of CTAAS. And the reason it was done or suggested by CTAAS is because there was a county in Middle Tennessee, and I forget which one, that had their fire system set up similar to the way Rome County does. Someone got injured at a volunteer fire department fundraising function. Because of the way that their system, like our system, was set, was set up, the county got brought into that lawsuit to be responsible for that person's injuries because that fire department was part of the county system. So what's done here is to try to avoid situations.
All right. Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Is it too late for this to protect us from helicopter accident?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Is this gonna be too late for to protect us from helicopter accident if that's, if we're brought into that?
Helicopter accident?
Yeah, where the, the fire truck hit the helicopter.
Okay, I'm afraid I'm not.
They have their own interns, Mr. Henderson.
Well, I mean, I just, we wasn't in disagreement at that point, is the reason I'm asking.
Yeah, but they still.
They have their own policy.
Yeah.
But this would be going forward, so if something happened before this, then there, is that possible?
All right. Any other, Mr. Chairman?
Do we, do we have, do we have an incident?
We, we had a vehicle roll into a.
County vehicle.
Yeah.
Oh, no. Fire department.
Yeah, it was a hill.
Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries 15. Resolution 082504, resolution approving a three-year agreement with Radcliffe Roofing for a biannual inspection and service at the Health Department roof. Motion by Henderson, second by Parks. Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Mayor, any input on that? But, so, you know, we built a brand new health department, and over the last couple of years, that did not include a new roof. So protecting our investment, that roof is not scheduled for replacement yet, but still the type of roof it is is subject to intrusions and, and so it needs, it's a high maintenance roof. We need someone to be able to look after it on a regular basis, again, protect our
Mr. Parks, you had to say?
What's the cost?
Uh, three thousand. Three thousand, yes.
Nothing, nothing further.
All right, Chair recognizes Commissioner Douglas.
So, dear, Commissioner Mayor, dear, and all this, we, we had nothing to root, none of the roof was replaced.
Well, no, that's, that's not necessarily true. There were large sections that had to be, I want to say replaced, because we've been into a whole different issue with replacement versus maintenance last year. But while the building was being reconstructed underneath, we had to address numerous issues on the roof. A lot of it had to do with the construction. But again, to protect this investment, we've got to have some contractor in place to keep us from getting hold of it.
So, so the issues that we have now, are they related to any of the repairs that they done?
No, no. These would naturally occur.
Because the reason I bring this up, I mean, you know, it's just like, you know, we had issues with the windows. I just want to make sure that we're not paying contractors to come in here and do work under, you know, contracts and stuff, and then we're having to go back and, we're having to go back and fix stuff at the taxpayer's fees.
Now, this is, you know, they had the bones of the buildings, what we kept, and the roof was part of that. Now, it's scheduled to be replaced in the coming years, but it still had life left on it, and which is why we didn't add that to the cost of the total work first. Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any other discussion on 82504? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries 15. Resolution 82505, resolution to amend the revenue expenditure of the 101 General Fund for the dementia care, community assistance, resource, power grant. Motion by Wilson, second by Doug. Commissioner Wilson?
This is one of those no-brainer ones, $10,000 grant, zero percent match. So, glad to do it, glad we got it.
Commissioner Doug?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries 15. Resolution 82506, resolution to reflect changes revenue and expenditure for 101 General Fund for the Community Development Block Grant addressing food insecurity grants for the 25, 26 fiscal year. Motion by Doug, second by Wilson. Commissioner Doug?
This is a grant that is carried over, I believe, originally from '23, '24, and we carried over last year, carried over this year, and it is gradually getting spent down, but it was no constitutionally counted.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Wilson?
I do, well.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none. Motion carries 15. Resolution 82506, I'm sorry, we just did seven, resolution adopting regulations and permitting and operations of the short-term rental units within Rome County. Motion by Cunningham, second by Gann. Commissioner Cunningham?
Stacy's done a lot of work and we're very happy with all the work she's done. If there's any questions or she wants to speak to that, we'd like her to, but kudos to Stacy.
Commissioner Gann?
Yeah, multiple departments in the county worked very hard on this with Stacy. I agree with you, I appreciate everything you've done.
I got some questions.
Don't call it.
I'm refraining right now.
Thank you, Stacy.
You just got out of boots and been here.
I'd like to thank everybody on the committee if you're here, raise your hands, stand up. Everybody's conquered uncharted waters with diligence, and I'm so thankful for all the work that's been putting into this, we can open for the rest of the county.
Can you tell them possibly what, what this is made?
Oh, we'll be the walrus of the state of Tennessee. They're all in our progress for this. And significant revenue, not only in the, but the codes department, best office, Molly wasn't able to be here tonight, but she gets to change the property rate and we get some teeth to the, to govern the short-term rental therapy needs. It's a win all the way around the county for us. So, very, thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Burden.
Mr. Chairman, the other main thing that we got out of this was you had, you had Madam Clerk's office involved, you had property assessor's office involved, you had codes offices involved. So everyone, everyone had to be in agreement before we could take the, the, this final step, that this was the final step. It showed that our, all of our folks were working together and we appreciate it. Thank you for all you did.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Wilson?
When this, or when this resolution was wrote, a lot of this, when the ad hoc committees are started, they really don't come to fruition, they really don't, a lot of things just fall through. But I, I mean, just to know that all around the state, they're gonna be looking at us as a model to get, they're gonna be copycatting the same resolution, the same model, the same thing that, that committee put in all the work for. It's gonna be great. It's big things coming, a lot of revenue that's for uncharted waters, so good deal.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Parks?
Yeah, the county attorney, can you clarify the grandfather for folks that's already doing it? Because I sent emails, but I kind of got lost in what, are they grandfathered in or are they not?
If they have been paying all required taxes, which would include motel, motel, for six of the past 12 months, they're grandfathered in. And they will be grandfathered in until their property is sold and transferred, until it ceases to be used as a short-term rental unit for 30 continuous, 30 continuous months or until they have violated local laws or regulations.
So the answer is if they've been compliant, doing everything they're supposed to, they are grandfathered in?
They're grandfathered in, they don't have to get permitted.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Burden?
Again, again, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. And again, I think we have. Ten, 10 or 12 of those, that, that probably could be grandfathered. I think another thing that came out was the lease, the lease at Canyon Creek Marina and campground. Do we know when the, when that lease expires?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Could, could we, could we look at that and also, I think our question was, was the percent? I think it's 4%. I think it started out at 7 and now it's 4%, but I, but we.
We don't know, I, I just don't remember.
Okay, but I could, can we, can we get that, get that information?
You want to know when the lease at Canyon Creek expires?
Yeah, when it was, yeah, when it was signed, when it expired and.
And the last time that was renewed, as well as the campground.
Okay, I'm just familiar with one lease, are there?
I think there's one for the Marina and I thought there was one for the campground, because it came, it came later, it came a couple of years afterward.
Okay, the only lease that I have access to would be for the campground, so if there's one for the Marina, we'll have to find it.
And also, Mr. Chairman, I think during work with the committee, we found that, that there are some, there are some problems, some irregularities in, in the resolution that we passed about campgrounds and things. So we, we may have to go back and look at, at, at the campgrounds to see in regards to private structures, all, all that's going on there, so we, we may pick up, we may pick up some revenue there as well. We, we appreciate if we can just find out what those, what those leases are written. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate on Resolution 082507? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries 15. Resolution 082508, resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Motion by Hamilton, second by Henderson. Dr. Hamilton.
I just want to say I appreciate the process, the rubric per se that we use to try to figure out the needs of this county, and we never have enough money. Uh, so we have some great ministries and programs in our county to really serve our citizens and services, so we deserve this committee.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Commissioner Cunningham.
As the Director of Habitat for Humanity, I appreciate the county helping us out. It all goes to a great purpose. Thank you.
Commissioner Burden.
Just, just chairman, I thought this committee did, did an excellent job, uh, sifting through all this, and, and the first time that we, I guess, tried a little different twist to it, and as always, there's always some, some room. I, I think, I think as we go, as we go through this, um, you know, some, especially, especially the A category, you get a hundred percent of what you ask for, sometimes you ask for the sky, and, and in some cases here, they, they got it. Uh, so I think we can go back and just reevaluate, because next year, everyone will be asking, asking for it. But I would like to make an amendment that before, before we, in the applications next year, that applicants that have received the money this year, give us, give us a breakdown of what the money was actually spent for, so, so that we can sort of watch what our money, what our money is going to, where it's going to, and see if we're, if we're heavy in one area and, and not in another area. But just watching the taxpayer's money from a, from a standpoint of.
So we'll even need to do that before the month of June, we're in a setting with a resolution, because we have powers by resolution to do exactly.
Or I can just amend the resolution that says that's part of, that's part of the next year's, next year's, uh, like we did, uh, percentages.
So, I mean, it's simple, simple fix here, and that is just to require, require a page on the application that says, provide a report on how you spent money last year to make sure it matches up. So that way, as you go into the next cycle, next year, you have that available to review.
But we'll need to be amended, because we're passing it as a law.
Well, I don't think, to that point, I don't think it would require an amendment of the process. I think the process stays exactly the same thing. All we're saying is, on the application, is if you receive money last year, report on how you spent that money, and the process would stay exactly the same.
But, but we will change the process.
Well, that's, so that's another thing. I would like to talk to you as chairman of that committee, I think you're chair, chair of the committee? Yeah, you're chair of the committee, about some challenges that came up in discussion on budget committee, about how the process could potentially be manipulated next year, that I think we need to address now, before we get to there, and just so that we make sure all the applicants are on the same page on the front end, whether we don't get hit with, like Mr. Burden was saying, really high requests that kind of skew.
Yeah.
Based on what category they're going to follow.
Well, they did sit here and watch how we.
Exactly.
Didn't have one A policy, so, I mean, if you don't change it, no change it to, to, but, you know, all those were reputable individuals and personnel.
I think we could, we can adjust that rubric. If we, if we had a separate meeting, say this a while or something, before we get into that timeframe, I think we can adjust how, how we go through that.
All right, so are you still wanting to amend, or are you satisfied with that?
Well, I made a test.
We can, we can accomplish what you're saying just on that.
So, so as part of our, part of our resolution, provide Mideast, I think we need to get Mideast back to the budget, like we did those others, because there's always, that was a huge mistake. We almost got, they caught him, did a great job, went back and picked it up. I think the Mideast thing needs to be, so we need to amend, Mideast going to the budget, or can you do that?
My recommendation is not do anything yet. Let's, let's have a nonprofit committee.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate on, uh, eight twenty-five oh eight? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. All right, resolution, uh, zero eight twenty-five oh nine, resolution authorizing Rome County participate in the produce, uh, Sackler settlement. Motion by? Motion by Dove, second by Parks. Commissioner Dove.
Um, yeah, we've had, as you all know, we've had significant funds deposited into our, it's now one-twenty-seven, one-twenty-seven fund from settlements all across the country. We have had our eye on this one for years. We know this will probably be the largest one of all time. Don't have a clue what it will be, but it will be significant, so obviously we want to participate. There are additional, we think there are eight additional, uh, settlements right behind it. None that will come close to it this way. This will all go to the opioid council. We'll go straight to one-twenty-seven. Thank you.
All right, second by Parks, Mr. Parks.
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. We're pulling ten. Do you have that, you have that reflected, right?
Yes.
All right, so moving to eleven, uh, zero eight twenty-five eleven, resolution to amend the revenue expenditure for twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year in the General Capital Project Fund, one seventy-one OES, most office of emergency service, and the Tennessee Valley Authority Radiological Emergency Preparation. Motion by Kirby, second by Gann. Commissioner Kirby.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to make, you can kind of comment on that, sir.
Uh, it's just, I mean, it's just a grant?
Zero percent match.
Yeah, zero percent match, no brainer, uh, for us to participate in.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fifteen. All right, this is the one we've waited twelve days for, uh, resolution amending the general purpose school fund, central cafeteria fund, one forty-three transportation fund, one forty-four extended school program fund, one forty-six, reflecting changes in revenue expenditure estimates for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Uh, motion by Brackett, second by Parks. Commissioner Brackett.
Is this just cleaned up in the budget, Mr. Jenkins, just, does this clean up, just kind of moving the money around, or?
No, this one is a resolution that amends the budget for the teacher bonus that was put in with the school voucher available.
Okay, the voucher.
Yes.
So, so is that, that's the one forty-one, where the teachers' funds will come out?
Yes.
And that's four hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars moved?
The teachers' funds will be approximately one point one million that'll be paid back by the state.
All right, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burden.
I've got another question. I'll wait till the end of what, but.
You've got the floor.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins, the special call meeting the other night, the RFQ, could you maybe tell us a little bit about that?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Brackett. Thank you all that showed up at the meeting, uh, my, uh, our board, uh, we had a meeting on the RFQ for the, uh, to, to look at our facilities, to do a facility. Helped us vet some of the applicants. We had eight applicants. Uh, we scored them individually. They scored, I scored. We didn't get together on the scoring, and we came up with the top four. Our board elected unanimously to interview the top four as far as conducting a study. That does not commit us to spending any funds at this time. I think the price tag took some people back on, on some of the projects, um, so we're certainly going to move forward very cautiously, and we will vet those as a full board, will vet the four top finalists from the RFQ process, and then we'll make a decision, uh, going forward, hopefully with, with our partners here on the commission, because it's an expenditure for the county. We have to know that that process is going to be fruitful and worthwhile before we commit those funds.
So, with that, at the meeting, we're looking at two hundred and thirty thousand, up to maybe, possibly, five hundred thousand with the four that.
Yeah, there was a, uh, it was a, I think it took some people back, even the lower part was more than some people had.
Right, yeah.
And the highest one, I think I read the paper, I think Damon's here, uh, one board member said he would vote for that to a county golden brick.
Yeah.
So, like I said, there's, it's a lot to consider. Uh, I think the process can be fruitful, whether we, whether we enter into an agreement or not, um, but the board will vet each of those candidates and those applicants before making a decision. But it's going to be, it's not going to be a very quick turnaround.
So the timeframe, say it was voted on, say voted to spend the money. What are we, like, around the years, that kind of what they're saying, maybe?
The, the timetable's varied some, and to be honest with you, I don't have it right off, but most of them, um, would wrap it up, start finishing less than a year, um, as far as coming back and presenting the product to the board.
I just, I know they was talking and around the room, and I guess some of the board members, and I'm just trying to get, put it out there, some of the school board members felt like that. The commission as a body was demanding that. Me personally, I'm not. I'm, you know, that's up to you guys. If you all want to spend that money, if you all want to take that, that leap, but it kind of hit me. I've thought about it, thought about it, and I thought, you know, I don't know how the others feel, but as far as, I feel like it's up to you, so on my behalf, I'm not charging saying you something you have to do or anything like that, but I don't know how the others feel, but I just know that in my district, you know, that's a whole nother year, and we're in need now. We've been in need for ten years in my district, and we rock this a year, then we finally start building, you know, try to do something. We're three, four, or five years down the road, you know? But we don't have a lot of time, so I, I don't know if there's a way around it. I don't know what the fruit will come out of it, and maybe we'll see, you know, but I'm just, that's my opinion on it anyway.
If I may respond to that one, but I, hey, I get it, and I appreciate you being there, um, the conversations with our board and the funding body of the commission, that's where it's at.
Yes.
Having conversations, real conversations with your friends and neighbors that serve the other function, um, those conversations are going to be where it's at, and through those conversations, our board may not, they may not want to spend that money, or they may want to spend that money. I did, I, you know, I work at the leisure of the board, as they say, whatever six of them decide, I have to do that, or I have to go work somewhere else. But, uh, those conversations, that, that's what they want. They want y'all's feedback. We want, uh, the board and the commission communicating on these things, because like I said, it's, we're all going to own it. We're all going to pay for it, one way or the other, whether we have industry come in or whatever. However it shakes out, we're all going to pay for it. Everybody that lives here and works here, uh, so we need to communicate those things, because it's way more important than Russell Jenkins. I promise you, I'm not going to be the determining factor on that.
Right.
It's just those conversations are what's going, it's going to take to move forward.
And that was my biggest question, as taxpayer, taxpayer money. We've done it once, you know, ten, eleven years ago. I can't remember what the price, do you remember the price tag on that once before, what we spent on the study, or?
No, you're talking about the Lewis Group study?
Just around.
I mean, that's been the price tag for that portion of, because we've done a lot of projects. There are architects as well, so I don't know. When you blend it all together, it's well over a million dollars, um, but that's, I mean, that's nine roofing projects, that's all referenced, you know, there's a ton of other factors in there. It's not just the, it's not just the work done, uh, doing the community-wide study, but, so like I said, I, I get it.
It's a lot of money. I feel like we could put maybe two kids, two schools, and we know there's a need now, a couple of needs. I'm just ready to get those needs taken, you know, in my district, and I know, I know you're working on it, but.
Yeah.
Another year, but I'm just telling you, as far as me as commissioner, I know they said that they felt like the commission, that we're making them do that. I'm not making them do that. I don't, I can't speak for anybody else, but, you know, definitely have a few guys. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Parks, you had to say it.
No, I had nothing.
All right, Chair recognizes Commissioner Dawes.
I've got a question for, for Russell there. When these things are done, is there like a committee put together, like, or, you may have something, it's going to be for make, maybe something for the commission, actually the taxpayers, uh, I mean, have they got, I guess what I'm asking, what kind of input do they have, actually, other than just on the, because I know you can buy them meetings all, all day long, and all night, a lot of them show up.
Well, the, you know, the initial studies, they did meetings in every community that was open to public, they tried to promote them, um, so I'm assuming if we go this route, they will do something very similar to that, but as far as making the determination on the RFQ, I mean, we're a representative form of government, so it's, uh, you know, the, hopefully, that our decision-makers have, are privy to more information than, than the general public, because they've been at various meetings and so on and so forth. So generally, I mean, those meetings are all open, uh, they're welcome to come, they're welcome to come in. I mean, I think Mr. Brackett can tell you, you know, they opened for him to a free dance the other night.
Yeah.
Because, you know, they're the same, they, they want to make the best decision for the county. They're not sitting there trying to be touchhogs and do it without, without anybody else. They're just, it's a very complex issue, and there's no necessarily right or wrong answer on any of these questions. And there's, it's, uh, what's best for the kids, if we boil it down to that and we try to focus on that, then we still make half the people math with every decision. Uh, you just got to, you know, just like y'all do, you just got to roll up your sleeves, pray about it, and then put your best foot forward, and that's, that's what we try to do. We've got a really good board. I feel like all nine members, uh, we've got nine right now, are really compassionate, and they care about these kids, and they want the best for our kids. And with that being said, are there going to be critics? Absolutely, but we're going to, we're going to roll up our sleeves, do the hard work. I take lumps every day, but I'm doing it for our kids. I truly believe that, and I just, as long as we make that the focus, it makes them not hurt us back, so.
Well, we appreciate what you're going to do.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. That's all I've got.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Jenkins, I was, we was in a meeting with the school board, uh, probably maybe a year or so ago, and one of the members said, we don't know whether to build a new school or put a roof on it. And you, you have to maintain, even if you're going to build, you know, just like Mr. Brackett said, you know, like, we've got buildings that have needs, you know, as you're going along with the building project, you have to maintain. So, you know, work still's got to be done on what we have, even if you're going to tear it down any year. If you've got the kids in there, and the teachers, and all that, you, you need to maintain the building, you need to fix the leak, uh, or whatever it is. And, uh, I just wanted to remind everybody of that, you know, that just because we're building a new school, don't mean that we don't have to maintain what we got, because we do. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate on oh-eight-two-five-twelve? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries fifteen. Uh, there's no other business to conduct with the county commission, I'll take it.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on. Uh, Mr. Burden.
I just like to body everybody down that Rockwood tonight, got a big street festival going on, you'll enjoy it, Monday morning. Uh, and, and again, thanks to, thanks to, uh, to Stacy and the Elites, those, uh, guys that, they're working, they're working their tails off behind the scenes, uh, you can see it in, in the reports, but, thanks, thank y'all again, and, and thanks to the committee.
Chair. I'm sorry. You first. We'll go with each first.
You know, should have received an email of the pitch tournament, August thirtieth, at Montfort Park, uh, for the young man's family, uh, that, uh, died at East Rome County Fire Department. I want to thank my nephew for, uh, sponsoring that, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout. It doesn't matter what it costs, it's, it's for a good cause, just bring your pocketbook and come on.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, all I've got on that is, uh, when all this went down, there was a challenge that was issued, not just to county commissioners, but to the public, to general. I talked to the parents Friday at the service, they were overwhelmed with what this county had done in support of that family. On the night of Thanksgiving, the young man was at a class that we held at the DOC, phenomenal young man, heard a lot of history. All the young man could tell me was that he wanted to help his community, he wanted to help it. But the, but the parents wouldn't let, they wouldn't be let y'all know. Thank you, thank the community, thank everybody for the prayers and support. Uh, tomorrow night, Blair's still got an event going on, is that blood drive and donation, so anybody gets up to Blair later. Thank you all for that, and I want to say congratulations.
All right, any other business, any other announcements? Hearing none, seeing none.
Why don't we stand and have a little applause for him before we end, and then we'll close out that way. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.